Thanks. Uh, welcome to everybody on Zoom, uh, as well as folks here in the trailer. Uh, go through the hybrid open meeting intro here. Let's see, public participant participation guidelines, member of the pub members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting must use their full name for Zoom access or full names are not used. People will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. The town reserves the result, the right to remove any member of the public from the meeting who doesn't use a full name or acts inappropriately. We're using Zoom as well as in-person meeting for this meeting, uh, which will let and which does allow for public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. Attendees, uh, should join in listening mode and they can click the raise hand button if they wish to speak. I will call upon those folks who have raised their hands in the order that they were raised for best of my ability. All questions should be directed through the chair. Confirming member access of them as a preliminary matter. This is Joe Brous, Chair of the Town Council Study Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. I'll go Kelly.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Uh, Rachel, is Rachel the only one?
I'm here.
Yes, Rachel's the only one on. Okay. Just want to make sure I couldn't couldn't quite read all it. Uh, Curtis.
Yep.
Jill.
Here.
And Donna, you're a member, you get to say aye on this part.
Oh.
Well, you're not, you don't vote, you are a member of the committee.
Thank you.
Um. Alright, uh, we don't have staff, but anticipated speakers on the agenda, which are the folks from the Collins Center. Um, Anthony.
I know.
Here. Sorry about that. Um, Mel. And Patricia.
Hi.
Alright, they've all confirmed. Great, thank you. Um, good afternoon. This, uh, this open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature the opportunity for public comment or questions. For this meeting, uh, the Town Council Study Committee is convening by video conference as well as in-person, uh, participation. Uh, as was posted on the town's website, identifying the length for the public to join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Um, we have had some supporting materials, uh, provided by the folks from the Collins Center and, uh, they will be available on the town website after our meeting. Uh, the public is is encouraged to follow to follow along using opposed to the agenda unless I know otherwise. Uh, let's see, we will now turn to the first item on the on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules to more effective and clear conduct of our business and we ensure accurate meeting minutes. Uh, I will introduce each topic on the agenda and after we have some discussion, I will give the opportunity for, uh, questions from members of the public. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and please remember to speak clearly so that we get, um, um, good meeting minutes. Think that should do. Uh, every vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call since we're separating. Um, first item on the agenda is accept, uh, on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
Second, alright. Jill.
Hi.
Curtis.
Hi.
Rachel.
Aye.
Jeff.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Joe, aye. Uh, alright, Town Council Study Committee is being recorded. The, uh, one, one little bit of administrative information that I wanted to share with everybody, it's not on the agenda, but I just, I thought it would be irrelevant from our conversation from two weeks ago. Um, I did meet with Libby Gibson on July third, um, and it had a good update with her. Um, we are going to be able to get some additional funding for the folks at the Collins Center, um, and actually it's being worked on by the Finance Department now. Um, Anthony, you and I can chat about the details about that offline, but, um, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have enough funds available to continue these meetings, uh, through the work plan that the Collins Center has outlined. Um. The other question I think that what that came up the last time was, you know, do we have enough time to complete our deliberations? Um, one of the issues I brought up with Libby as well, is the Select Board gonna support this as a Select Board article or is it, are we gonna be a citizens article and therefore have to sort of work towards a earlier completion date of our efforts? Um, I don't have a definitive answer on that, but, uh, Libby was gonna be talking to Brooke, um, Moore, Chair of the Select Board. Yeah, but Libby was of the opinion that, given that this is a, uh, a committee that was, you know, basically created by or or manned by the Select Board. Um, that she thought they would actually support us and submit this as a Se- Select Board, uh, article, which certainly should give us additional time to do our our work, which was good news.
Yeah.
Um.
What is it? What are the two timelines to that again?
Yes, I don't know the actual dates, but I think the citizens articles are generally sort of the end of October-ish. And then the Select Board has the flexibility to submit articles to to the town warrant, I think up until the end of January.
January.
Is it January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they edit that stuff too until the very end, like even the day before.
Yes. And Libby did say that basically, you know, given that we're, we're going back for an amended contract with the Collins Center, I will probably have to go before the Select Board sometime the next, whatever, whatever she wants me to, to kind of give an update as to where we are and what we're doing.
Yeah, great.
Um, and then the other thing, and this sort of relates to, um, Donna circulated a list of some of the, um, public outreach PR kind of, uh, opportunities that are happening, you know, kind of about our committee. Um, so Donna and and Curtis, thanks for coordinating and putting this stuff together, uh, but I just didn't want to mention that. You probably, you probably all saw the article in the Currents, um, about, you know, where we are. Um, Jeff and I both were interviewed by the Inky Mirror today, um, so they're gonna have some sort of news item on the Town Council Study Committee. Um, there's also gonna be an article in the next end magazine about our deliberations. I'm not quite sure when that gets published. Um, and then, and I, and sort of, this is already on, uh, Donna's, Donna and Curtis's list, but I'm talking to the, uh, non-voting taxpayers on Saturday and then, uh, Curtis and I are gonna be meeting with the Pulpus HOA Homeowners Association on Sunday, so.
But, Joe.
I'm sorry. Did I say that backwards?
Well, I just want to mention that, um, I'm also committed to the Tom Nevers Association later and, um, the Wisconsin, um, so, and I think they were in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the good news is, you know, I think that the, the media on the island seems to be giving us a lot of, um, you know, coverage, which is great, and I think more opportunities we have to talk about this and educate the public about what we're talking, what we're doing, the better. And I think that's sort of certainly is consistent with what Anthony and the folks from Collins talked us about.
Oh, I quickly too, when I was thinking the dean from the Inky today, uh, didn't say he's watched all of our meetings, kind of getting ready for that.
Oh.
You know, he probably watches on top of speaking like all of us that she, uh, his meetings watching this last weekend. Uh, but he is watching, and I know Jason at the Congress has watched them both too, so they're paying attention. Now they're, they're having on their regular viewers. Resting on this to people.
Yeah.
And I know that you had comments on Facebook. Yeah?
I'm not.
You're not? It wasn't you?
No.
Someone else? Who was it?
Susan.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Susan.
Right.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
I'm.
Yeah, they, but they made some comments about how, I don't know, was there ten of them on that thread? Um, talking about it and how they'd been to the meetings and so, that they were, you know, they were opposed to it, but they were asking each other questions about it.
Well, I think that's fine. I mean, one of the interesting comments that, uh, John Carls went with, with Grady.
Um, Grady.
Grady, thank you. Um, um, made to me when I was talking to him about the latest current article was that, uh, you know, folks that 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 oppose this idea, um, have not been very vocal and he's, you know, once, you know, in a certain sense, we've had a free, free field or an open field to talk about it, uh, but that probably won't, you know, last forever and that's part of the democratic debate people should to say, you know.
No, it's good. I would just want to mention it so people look for it. That was good.
I, I think it's all very supportive. I'm, I'm encouraged. It seems to be very supportive.
By non-voting taxpayers?
Well, we are, but yeah. But I think it sounds like, I mean, as you said, the news wires are covering it. The Inky's very interested in it. It's a very important topic and it sounds like there's some.
I mean, all, all to the good. I mean, I think the more, more conversation, the better and, um, you know, we'll see what happens. Alright, that was, that was my little news. Um, the next agenda item is approval of the minutes for the May twenty-ninth, June twelfth, and it's the, the, the agenda I wrote down June twenty-sixth, but actually the, the minutes that we actually have, I think, unapproved are actually May twenty-second, May twenty-ninth, and June twelfth. So the June twenty-sixth is not done yet. Um, has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I did.
Two of them.
Yeah. Oh, you did.
I mean, if we, if we can't approve them now, we'll, we'll do it, we'll, we'll bring it back up again next time, but, um, I would, they're starting to pile up.
Well, I wrote two of them, so I liked them. And then the last one, whoever did that was a very good summary, so I would move approval of all three. Just get it off the table.
Okay, people are comfortable with that? Alright, I'll go the other way. So Kelly.
Aye.
Yeah, aye. Rachel, you still on? Yeah.
Yes, aye.
Alrighty, um, Caroline, you're up. I, I noticed you're up there.
Yeah, I'm saying I haven't finished reading them.
Fair enough. Curtis.
Aye.
Joe, aye. Joe, aye. Alright, so we've got some of them out of the way and I'll fix the, uh, get them to more in. Alrighty, I think that's all the housekeeping items. Um, Anthony, are, are you, I'm sorry, the other question?
I just wanted that you can, on this, I, I, I'm gonna say it every time. Do we have a few more? Like Bo's gonna see the builders, which I think is great.
Yeah.
We've got the Chamber of Commerce on here, which would be great. You got Self-March Center, it'd be good to maybe get Sherburne Commons on here, but, um, and the media should be good outreach, but are there some other groups that are voters? I think we need to just work on that list a little bit and I'll try to put my head to it too. And I haven't, to be honest, I, I haven't, but I will.
No, and I think your issue about voters is, you know, is important. Um, I mean, a lot of the homeowners associations that you talk to, you gotta believe that
There's a mix.
significant chunk are non-resident or summer, summer people. Um, so no, I think if we can think, you know, Donna and and Curtis about are there groups that we can talk to that are more islanders, um, so.
Well, obviously the Rotary.
The Rotary.
You're on.
Builders Association was a good, is a good one. Um, I think there is something to add on this.
Are you?
Arab.
Narab's good.
Yeah.
Yep. The Interfaith Council.
Narab's on here.
Yeah. I just, I.
Oh.
Something to discuss.
Alrighty, um.
There are some like, I don't know if it's in the same category, but there's like formal like social media groups, we have a lot for social services, and then like WhatsApp groups and Facebook groups, there's not a
That are sort of island, island residents kind of.
Yeah, they're all.
Well, could I ask you, I'm not savvy enough electronically, but if you could suggest some ways that we could either reach out to the people, either in person or, you know, with some of our information, that would be great.
Yeah, happy to add that list and then especially just like how, like what materials are we sharing with them? But I know that was really good.
That was an excellent, I couldn't.
Alrighty, um, Anthony, are you up there? We hope there you are for us. Alright, yeah, I think, I think we've, uh, gone through all of the, uh, administrative and 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 administrative stuff, so, um, I think we're, we're back to you on a continuation of our conversations on, uh, the executive. Um, Executive Department, if you will, of Ta- of the, of the Town Charter and, um, you know, the floor is yours.
So I'm gonna, in a second, I'm gonna turn over to Mel Collector, who did, uh, uh, most of the work on the document that you see before you today. I'll just give a sort of a brief introduction. Um, so based on the vote last week, which was to, um, uh, move forward with the council, with the council manager form of government, uh, we've drafted a, uh, the council manager section of that charter and, uh, it is really based on what's in your current charter, just adapted to what it would be under a town council form. Um, so we ported over most of what's, what's in your current charter. Um, Mel's gonna go through, uh, what's the same or what are sort of distinctions from your existing charter. And then one other thing I just point out, uh, uh, to the committee is, um, Section Four, which is part of, so that the two sections that we're looking at from your current charter would be Sections Three and Sections Four. That those are the executive, uh, branches of your government, the Select Board in the, in the, um, Town Manager. Your Section Four, which is where the Town Manager's authority exists, also includes a bunch of other provisions about the Town Clerk, um, about some other departments. Those aren't gonna be in what's before you now. In a new charter, those would be under other sections, um, or at least that's what we'd be suggesting you, you could propose to have here, but in the, the sort of bones that we've got before, you're just not, you just don't have those there because they'd be somewhere else. Um, so with that out the way, I will turn over to you, Mel, and would you like me, Mel, would you like me to share your memo and I can sort of scroll down as you talk about it or?
Um, we, why don't I make some introductory comments and then why don't you do that? Uh, but just, I'll, I'll give you a cue on that.
Um, Anthony, I'm sorry, um, I'm, well, actually, Anthony, just one thing that occurred to me in, in chatting with Libby, um, last week. Um, you know, she did request that at some point in this process, um, you know, the Town Council, uh, KP Law, um, is gonna kind of wanna, I don't know, over, over review or or take a look at the draft that we create with you. Is, is that what, at what point would it be the right time to share, you know, a draft or a current version with KP Law?
Uh, I think that's very normal. Um, and I guess in some ways it depends. I, I would sort of suggest more conversation with Libby. So just for the sake of argument, let's say that, um, you know, you look at what we put before you and, you know, maybe with some minor changes, you, the committee votes to sort of adopt that as it's the basis for its, um, uh, Town Manager section of the charter going forward. Um, if KP Law's amenable, I think you could send that to them and say, you know, we've done one section and here's, here's what it looks like and you can provide comment. Um, or you can get through whole portions of it and send it to them, to them at the end. Um, again, that depends on their availability, you know, getting a whole document at the end can be a lot and it could take some time to get it back to you guys with their comments. Um, so I think it just depends on their capacity. If they, if they are fine getting it piece by piece and they have the capacity for that, that I, I've seen that work before too.
Well, I, I'm just thinking about if, if we, if we're gonna have, you know, kind of a, uh, let's call it a deadline in January to have this available as a, as a Select Board article, um, I, I would guess I would vote for letting them see bits and pieces of it as we complete them, just so we don't drop, you know, fifty pages on them on December thirty-first and expect, you know, to have a have their concurrence, um, you know, in a couple of weeks. It just strikes me, this is gonna, it would be better that they, that we keep them up, up to date as we go along, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, I'd recommend that you just talk to them to make sure that that, I, I don't know what, oh, it's a big, it's a big law firm, but I know they have a lot of clients, so I don't know what their capacity is.
I, I just, you know, I just got the message from Libby that, you know, don't, don't expect that you're just gonna be able to work this through and then, you know, put it before town meeting with a KP Law blessing it, so, um, okay, I'm sorry, Curtis.
Um, I'm a little uncomfortable where we are because I'm looking at a piece that's Article Three Executive. I'd sort of like to know what's the outline, what's one, two, three, and four going to be, even if we're only looking at four. I want to know where the other pieces are that and when we're gonna get them and why we're looking at this, this way and not that way. So some outline of the overview would be very helpful to me.
Um, oh, Mr. Share, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony, go ahead. I mean.
Uh, we did send over an outline of what we call the generic charter at the last meeting. We can send that over again. Um, and this would, it's, it's titled Article Three because it's Article Three in that, um, in the outline of that draft charter. So it was.
So that's the roadmap that we're looking at.
Right, and I, I circulated, I know that I, I think I did not circulate them in advance of our last get together, but after the meeting, I did circulate the work plan and the draft charter to everybody, so if you don't have it, Curtis.
I have it. I just didn't know. I, I, I was just surprised to get the, this piece now. Um, and what's the sequence we're gonna look at?
Uh, maybe I can, I can start. The sequence is, is what's in the work plan. So the work plan, uh, starts with the executive, it goes to the legislative, then to other elected appointed officials and and so on. So all of the asked, all of the articles and functions of in the charter will proceed in that, in that, uh, in that order. Um, and, uh, we thought that the executive was a good place to start because quite frankly, we don't think there are a lot of changes. You know, the executive uh, section in, in your town meeting form of government is, is relatively similar to the, to the one. And so we thought that that was the start. You, you will find that the legislative section, uh, the next one after this will probably be one of your most difficult, along with the other elected appointed officials. Uh, but this was, I think, a good way to get going and, uh, get a, uh, sort of, um, so, a, a way of work, a work plan in, in order, in order for, in order for you to, uh, adopt language, at least preliminary language uh, on the charter. So, um, as, uh, Joe mentioned, we did talk about the executive last week, the last meeting, we did, um, provide, uh, some, somewhat of a comparison. Uh, I think the point was to try to, uh, get you to decide on the mayor versus manager. You did that. And so now this week, I've submitted actual language, uh, for a town council, um, um, charter for the executive branch, and that would be called Article Three in the charter that we're proposing. Um, and as Anthony mentioned, uh, in the Town Council form of government, there is no Select Board. So what we've done is we've consolidated the executive, uh, articles, which in your current charter are the Select Board and the Town Manager into one, the Town Manager, who would be the single appointed executive under a Town Council form of government. Um, now, some of the Select Board authority, uh, will be transferred, uh, the, certainly the executive and administrative authority is being transferred from the Select Board to the Town Manager, wherever, wherever that, that sharing was, was being done or currently being done. Um, but also, uh, the Select Board, as many of their duties will be transferred to the new Town Council, which will get to the, the next meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that, uh, there is, it does assume a Town Council. You'll see the checks and balances and some of the other, uh, procedures that involve the Town Council in the, in the executive, uh, uh, article. Um, so as I said, um, this is very similar. You have a strong, uh, Town, uh, Town Manager form of government, although it is a Town Meeting Form of Government. And many of those same duties and responsibilities will carry over into the Town Council form. And, um, what we have done though is we have used a different kind of charter, uh, to capture, um, the, the Nantucket Executive in, in this, uh, this new charter. We're not using as a starting point the language in your current charter. Uh, and what we've done instead is use some more, uh, modern and, uh, recently, um, you know, approved language and charters as a basis. And then what we've done is we've identified that specific provision in the current charter of the Town of Nantucket, uh, where you can see what some of the differences are, uh, where some of the things are missing. Uh, but we felt that by providing you this more comprehensive, uh, charter, that was a better, uh, place to start. So I think what we'll ask Anthony to do, um, is to, is to, uh, show, show on the screen the memo, uh, which, um, uh, starts with, um, uh, the next page. Um, and Joe, um, so the way we've done this with other committees is, um, you know, the full committee discusses, um, to this point, I don't think you're, you're creating, um, a subcommittee to just look at this and go back and then come back. So we're doing this as, uh, today as a, with a full committee. Um, and if that's the case, we, we probably shouldn't, I would recommend that we don't really dwell on a specific language. Uh, we deal on, um, issues and, um, uh, functions and, uh, allow the, uh, the Collins Center to draft that language as necessary, uh, and then we'll put it, uh, to you for a vote at, at some future meeting, probably the next meeting. So, uh, if that's okay with you, I'm just gonna start going right down the sections.
And then, and okay, and Mel, you just want and I, you know, people to sort of shout out, as it were, um, either questions or incurrence of, you know, on whatever paragraph you're, you're touching on.
I'll, I'll, I'll just introduce each section, uh, identify a couple of issues that I think are, are ripe for discussion and we'll go, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so for the first section, it's called Three One Appointments and Qualifications, and, um, this is very standard language. Um, there's not a lot of differences. The difference, I, you know, basically what it's saying is your Town Manager has to have a certain, a level of, of qualifications in order to be considered for this position. Um, and, um, what, what your current charter does in four point two A, it establishes some limitations on the length of the term of the Town Manager. Um, it doesn't have a max, like a, a, a exclusive like term length. You can continue, the Town Council could continue to renew the term, but the term can never be longer than three years at a time. This current provision of Three One does not have that. And it also does not have the requirement of residency, although I will talk a little bit more about that in C, uh, specifically, um. But, um, so in four point two A, I guess the issue is, uh, first of all, is this language, uh, seem generally acceptable? It is very standard language. And do you wish to impose, uh, term lengths, uh, similar to what you have in your current charter?
I guess. I'm trying to find four point two A in Article Three. Are we referring to our existing Town Charter?
Four point two A.
Okay, so really to do this usefully, you gotta sit with two documents and look at them side by side and.
Yeah, we sent, we sent both documents.
Well, I know you sent it out, but I didn't realize this was the way we had to look at it.
Yeah, I have.
That's okay. No, I can look at it. I just need to know, when you're talking about Article Three and four two A, and I don't see any four two A here, except you've got it and I got it at home. I just want to know what documents I am going to compare apples to apples. That answers my question.
So the only well. Well, so the only thing I think the only difference was the residency and the length of time.
So I understand. And, and isn't, isn't that an discussion item?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
Um.
Um.
Donna, go ahead.
Uh, I do have a question about the residency item. Should, I mean, is this a discussion? Should we, should the Town Manager be a resident?
No.
No?
Yes.
I think so.
So they have to become one within six months.
Yeah, that's what the current, that's what the current rule is, six months. So why change?
Why would you have this?
Right, I, 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 I would agree with that. I, I think that, like, my, just as I read this, I would, I would actually suggest going to the full three years the way the current charter has it.
Me too, and then.
And then basically, you know, I think, I'm, I'm sorry, Jill, you don't have to be a resident on day one. You have to become a resident at some points. Clearly, you're gonna recruit, you, you could recruit.
Of course.
Fine, yep.
What was it? Three-year number?
The current charter says, I think, three-year contract.
And which review.
Renewable.
Yeah, you have to review the administration periodically, so I think both of those things should be renewed.
You got that, Mel? So I, I think, I think the group were sort of in agreement that we would like to keep the three-year term and, uh, and the sort of the red, become a resident within six months, uh, language from the existing charter.
Uh, yeah, I think that's fine. And I, I think we assumed that, but, um, we, we didn't want just, uh, we, we're using a certain kind of form of charter that didn't have it in, but we want to identify that, so that's fine. There is a little twist, though, in four point two A, and what I find is interesting, it says, um, let's see, um, in the, in, in terms of the terms, uh, it says the Select Board shall appoint a Town Manager for an initial term of two years, then any successive terms shall not exceed exceed three years each. So, uh, do you want to continue that distinction between the initial term appointment and successive terms?
Well, I actually think it's, it's probably there to like give the, a, a new executive a shorter leash and then once, if some, presumably if someone becomes I don't know.
Makes it great.
Everybody gets, everybody gets comfortable with them. You, you're willing to extend a longer contract would be like the way I would read that. I, I would, I think it's okay to keep it personally.
So what, what I would, what I would tell you what, what I would tell you from the Ta- Town, uh, from your prospective, uh, candidate's pool, you know, any restrictions you place are going to, um, uh, in some, you know, techni- conceptually limit that, just limit the competitive process. I don't think two versus three will probably make a huge issue, and I think residency, which we typically don't. And I think residency, which we typically don't include in the Eastern Mass where there's a lot of population density and people are easy to move around. I think it's assumed that if you're going to become the town manager in Nantucket, you'd have to live there. So I don't think that's an issue, but just anything that you, anything that's different, you you could technically, you could conceptually restrict the competition for the position. So just, just, I don't think two versus three in the first term necessarily does that, but I did wanna make that point.
All right, I'm.
To me, I think, if you're gonna do three, you might as well do three, because I think a couple lines down, we're gonna get to a requirement for an annual performance review anyways. So if someone is not covered, busted in here too.
They can part ways.
They can part ways. It keeps it simple, and then you don't have to, I don't think you're gonna turn over the town manager.
I agree.
I think it makes it easier. All right, so the the consensus three, just go with three years. You got that?
I got it. Thank you.
So residency and three year term for the council.
Very good. Okay, in the proposed section three B, it's really just a provision, that's very standard provision in charters, that requires the town manager to vote full time to the office. And first of all, not hold any other offices in in the town, but also limit their other business, business activities with some approval. I think the typical ones are teaching or or things like that. I mean, you know, obviously, if a town manager is going to be doing, let's say they're a lawyer, and they wanna do a legal practice on the side. You know, I don't think that the council or the selectmen are likely to approve something like that. So this, this is the so this is what this does. I think you have a similar provision in your four two B. It's not as extensive in language, but it's essentially the same restriction, and we think that's very standard.
Okay.
Anthony, can you put up the the proposed charter back up there? I think, I think we should work from that. Thank you. Okay, so that was B. Any any thoughts there, any other concerns? Okay. Then C, in this particular charter, it's, it splits out the residency issue, so we've already talked about that, but that's where that that residency restriction will take, will be included in within C.
Don't we delete C then?
Yeah, he's been, he's gonna do that.
I'm just checking.
Well, this particular provision, this particular charter splits out residency between the terms and residency between A and A and C. So that's, this is the, this is the version that we're proposing, we're gonna be using.
Right, but but I guess what I'm assuming, Mel, is you're gonna come back, after we go through this document today, you're gonna come back and re-edit. And for, in the case of three point three one C, it will read something to the effect of, you know, the the candidate has six months to, you know, be in Nantucket, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Under D, it it's it's a provision that exists that just essentially says that the the town managers receive a compensation as the town council should determine, and it must be within the limits of available appropriations, very standard, non-controversial language. What happens is town managers and their their elected bodies negotiate a contract, an employment agreement. That's practically where where this, where D gets taken care of.
Okay.
That is not, by the way, in your current charter, but again, I, I think it, because of the negotiations, that that's, that's the way it works. So I think we should keep that in. And then E, I think I heard that this is not in your, in your current charter, but it's a very standard provision in the charter, and it's good government where it's very clear that there's an annual review of the town manager conducted by the town council. It gives a little bit of information, but you know, probably the details would be in that town manager's employment agreement, or maybe in the town bylaws or somewhere else. But this is basically requires it to ha- to happen every year, and that it should be, you know, based on goals and objectives that are collaboratively developed by the manager and council.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Interestingly enough, I I believe that requirement is currently housed in the actual contract with the town manager, because the select board does do an annual performance review. But I think they negotiated that through the employment review. So this is not a new concept, but probably a better place for it.
You know, the details of a lot of these things will be in an employment agreement. But in order for transparency and and, you know, to really make sure we understand how this executive function is gonna be handled, we recommend that it be included, this language be included in the charter.
Okay.
So now we move to a section three point two of this proposed charter, which is really the the meat and potatoes of the charter. It's really where all of the duties of executive and administrative authority are are listed here. Many of them have checks and balances imposed on them through action by the town council. I did wanna point out that in your charter, four point one A and B, I I think it's an outstanding discussion between policy and administration, even with the select board as you have it now. And I thought that was really good, encouraged. We're gonna take a look at that. I wanna talk to my colleagues about that to see how we can build some of that in into the into this introductory section of three, two. We think it's very good. I don't know if you wanted to take, just take a quick look at that and if you have any thoughts about that. Again, it's four point one A and B. Really talks about the distinction between policy and administration.
And and Mel, you, you folks at the Collins Center, you think that the sort of the division of policy decisions and the other one, and administrative decisions are kind of well laid out in in four point one A and B? Sort of.
I'm not sure.
Are you suggesting we kind of keep that, that, you know, those two definitional articles or?
Yeah, I I do. I I wanna talk a little bit more with with my staff or our staff here, but I I think that I really like that in B, in particular, it 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 creates these boundaries between the administration and the elected council. And I like it. So I'm just suggesting that somehow we we include some of that language in. Maybe here, maybe some of it in the legislative section, but I I did wanna point out that I thought it was a very good, well thought out distinction between policy administration that we'd like to, like to keep some of that.
I mean, for what it's worth among the committee, I I think the more we can carry over structure and definitions from the current town charter to this town council, I think will make this an easier transition to describe and to, you know, basically tell the voters that, you know, a lot of what's in our current documents is gonna be carried over to the new ones. Great. Thanks, Mel.
Totally.
Back to you.
All right, so now we're going to get into the the alphabet, and we we use letters here to begin to describe the very detailed duties and responsibilities. The first in A is is the budget. It's, you have similar language in your charter. Basically, it's, you know, one of the key aspects of the authority of the town manager is to prepare and submit a budget to the town council. And this, this particular article, and most of the articles that we do these days are including both the operating and the capital budgets within this, with within this section.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How do we do capital budgeting now?
Well, ba- basically, it occurs in parallel with the operating in general, I mean, actually, Joe, you're.
You have, you have a similar language in your charter.
Submit capital requests and.
Yes.
The capital committee that reviews it all and.
Yeah.
There there will be another detailed section on finance and budget that we're gonna get to down the road, so there'll be more details. But this is where we try to capture all the town manager's authority.
Joe.
Sorry, yep, Joe.
I mean, don't we, though, I mean, this is gonna keep coming up. Isn't that exactly the kind of thing we're going to probably eliminate is Capcom? We don't have to, but I don't think it has to be something that we spell out in our charter that we have to keep if they don't want it.
That that will be part of that.
All that is directing to town meeting, right? Like when you come to Capcom and then it's goes to the select board, and then they submit it, and then we have FinCom, it's all, you know. I don't know that we would need that, and I'm not saying they wouldn't want it at town council, they might, but I kind of, my instinct as a town council should get to decide if that's a board that they want, because that is an appointed board.
Mel.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Anthony, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, so, so first of all, you're absolutely right. There can be a different process for how you do the the capital budget. You may, as we continue to go through the parts of this charter, oh, I'm gonna say, eliminate or reassign, or reduce the responsibilities of certain boards that currently exist in town. But right now, the section Mel's talking about is just assigning responsibilities around the capital, around, you know, the responsibility around submitting something to the legislative body, to the town administrator. Then there will be sections on the process, because there are communities in which it's the executive runs several meetings in which they present the capital plan, then the legislative, legislative branch has their meetings, or the legislative branch creates subcommittees around those things. So there's a number of ways to do it. But I just, I don't want the conversation to get too derailed into the, we will be getting into the legislative branch in a future meeting.
Yeah, I just don't think the way they do it now, it might change, there might be things that are changed, but I don't think how Brian does it from his level is gonna change that much. Or how he presents to the town council.
Yeah, I can, so the the process that we currently use, each department submits their own capital request with supporting documents and the whole nine yards that that goes with it. You submit that in to town administration and finance department. You have a review with the finance director or town manager explaining it. There's a round of, you know, we don't feel like this meets the the senior plan at this time. This doesn't align with strategic plan goals. There's some review appearing down from there in discussions with departments, and then kind of that final package ends up at, for capital, for capital program committee, but then you kind of do that same review again on those that are remaining. Some of the projects change or alter, sometimes get combined with others in the, like that department review stage, where it makes sense for scale of economy sometimes. This, I'll suit myself as an example. I don't always know what projects public works is getting ready to put forward, or something comes up where we might have some overlap that we didn't originally identify, and those meetings can identify those to say, we're gonna be doing work on all this, really, your project and my project to go together, do that together. So it's a pretty decent process now, as far as it's got a lot better for years.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think the the point is that Andrew is making is, when we get to the legis, you're right, you're right. The town council should have the opportunity to set up whatever process it needs to review operating budgets and capital budgets. I I I assume that when we get to the legislative section, we're gonna talk about some of this, but it's gonna be general enough that if and when this thing actually comes to pass, they're gonna be able to put their own stamp on it.
Yeah, but he is asking about the process now, so that's why I think we jumped in, and it it will change, especially if you can submit a capital project anytime you want, which is essentially what you might be able to do.
Awesome. If I may, I think the process that we're using now actually fits well within this letter A, where I'm not sure the town manager is gonna wanna be able to be like, submit your capital request whenever we want, just for.
And you do an annual budget.
We do an annual budget, and so I think that would remain the same from there. Our initial review from this point at the legislative level, I think is, will be turned a little bit. But there may be provisions in there to say, something comes up, that there's a capital process, maybe it's a B.
I know, but capital's totally different, because a lot of that's debt exclusions and borrowing, which that ends up going on the ballot, so those are outside of the budget. So it's.
Yeah, I just think we don't need to like get into the weeds on this right here. It's kind of my view.
I think it's good for us to start thinking about it, actually. It's, it's one of the major changes that is not really a major change, but it'll confuse people a little bit. It it affects the town council and like their timeline and Brian's time.
An operating budget, you know, brought to review, front development process where you start and build it up from the bottom, and there's, just like there's gonna be some sort of a capital process, exactly how it gets dealt with on the new town council, I don't know, but we'll get there, figure it out, we'll figure it out when we get there. Sorry, Mel, fire away.
No, that's good. Yeah, I ju- I just do wanna assure you that we'll be spending a lot of time on budgeting and things like that. Okay, so B is one of the key powers of the town manager, which is the the power of appointment. Now, in this particular version of this draft, the town manager has all, all appointment authority subject to, for department heads and boards and committees, subject to the town council's vote of disapproval. You have that currently, the town manager does have the authority to appoint department heads with the select board disapproval. But I don't know, frankly, how much the town manager appoints boards and committees in Nantucket. You do, there is a provision in your charter that allows the select board to delegate to the town manager, boards and committees. But I just don't know how much of that is done. In this particular charter, all of the boards and the, all the boards and committees would be recommended by the town manager and could be vetoed by the by the town council.
Mr. Chair. Hi, Mel, it's Tom Dixon, select board member, Nantucket Select Board Member. The town manager does appoint two or three committees currently. And she she does submit letters to the select board per the charter of any department head hires, that we can submit a letter of disapproval if we wish.
Yes.
Just as you outlined.
Thank you, Tom. That's helpful. Now, in this case, again, we'll get to the legislative, and if you wanna change this, there's plenty of opportunities. But in this particular charter proposal, the town manager would be responsible for making appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. And what we've created is actually a dual process for department heads, where there's a much more urgent need to, you know, and there's job offers being made. It's fourteen days with that that the town council can disapprove it. Boards and committees would give a little longer period of time, thirty days. The the other big issue here is, right now, this this charter authorizes the town manager to appoint employees of the town. In the current charter, it's, it's interesting, it's the department heads themselves that appoint the employees. I gotta, I gotta find that particular provision. The four point two, uh, four point three. Yeah, four point.
Four, three, B.
B. Yeah, I thought there was something, maybe.
It's four, three, B in the red.
Yeah, I what I'm, what I'm looking for is the provision that where where it says who appoints the rank file employees of the town. Rank file employees of the town. And I thought that was, um. Provided to the department heads, but, um.
Mel.
Hey, yeah.
Mel, you want to look at four, six?
Four, six, yeah.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Curtis.
Right. My question is, um. The, um. Public Works wants to hire some labors for the summer. They apply, they go through, I assume a, a. Application process from the town. Who decides whether they get the job? The head of the public works or? The employment department or what?
So that's what we're talking about right now. Um, and thank you, Anthony, for finding that. It's in four point six. It, it, it essentially says. With authorization, the town manager is subject to the availability, availability of budgeted funds. The heads of town administration departments shall appoint and hire the personnel of their respective departments. So, um. That currently exists. Um, we're not opposed to that. Uh, the current proposal, it gives it all to the town manager. Uh, and the town manager is ultimately in charge. It says with authorization of the town manager, but the actual appointment, for example, uh. Of those individuals you mentioned in the DPW. Um, you currently do that with your department, uh, town department heads. This, this charter provision would give it to the town manager. So you, you know, that's something I think we should talk about.
Well. I'm in favor of keeping the, uh, both provisions. In our current charter. Town, uh, town council can delegate department hours that they want to. Town manager, which is probably how we got three. Boards that are appointed because you delegated that. Authority, most likely.
Well, I think one of, I thought Parks and Rec is in the charter that the town manager appoints that. That's in one of our. Governance.
Yeah, I think that was part of a charter change, one of these incremental charter changes.
Left and came back. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. I happen to like the language in four point six. I mean, it, it seems to me that, you know, you, you. We've already got a process where, you know, for senior level hires, the town manager has authority to, to make job offers. Subject to the approval or disapproval, whichever way it works. Of the, of the select board or in the future, a town council. And it strikes me, if you've got senior managers running departments, they should be able to hire and, hire and fire people within their. Whatever, you know, again, given union rules or whatever, but I mean.
And they would budget for it.
Yeah, they would budget for it, but I don't think you need to have the town manager.
No, but I would like to emphasize within current budget guidelines. In other words, I don't want DPW to say, I'm going to pay 60 bucks an hour to a guy, a labor. And so mine's is getting 35 elsewhere. So.
That's a union problem.
Well, how about in, in a plus is, that's not a union situation, but consistent with. Town government guidelines somehow.
I mean, it's, it's, it's that budgeted, you know. Okay, there'll be a budget built and certain positions will have certain compensation attached.
Alright, just want to be sure we keep it consistent with.
Yeah.
Budget practice.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, uh, just very briefly. Um, uh, so there is a trend, um, across, um. Cities and towns, mainly towns, because they have this more distributed. Structure in terms of reporting structure to consolidate, uh, the appointing authority, um, in the executive, uh, branch, uh, whether it's a. A town manager or mayor or what have you. Um. And primarily, um, this is to ensure consistent policy, you know, towns have not always had personnel departments, uh, and really robust. Sort of HR rules and that's, you know, becoming a real, had, had become a real issue. And so there's that consolidation and to ensure that things are applied evenly. There's really been that consolidation, uh, across communities to have the appointment authority vested in one. Uh, individual or entity. With regard to the way things work on the ground, uh, that doesn't mean that the hiring procedure that a person goes through will change. And essentially the department heads would be. Exercising authority on behalf of the, uh, town manager to do the hiring, uh, and firing, but ultimately it's the. Manager's office who has the final say. That's, that's really what that language that Mel identified allows. Whereas this. Um, you've got a provision in here where no firing will happen without the authorization of the town manager. Um, but it's, it, it creates a, there's a buffer layer there that the trend is to go away from. So just. I just wanted to make the committee aware of that.
We, we operate like this by current practice where. When you're hired by the town. You go through the process typically that apartment you comply for. Once you do the interview process, they select a candidate. And then you put a hiring recommendation forward, compared to the resources department, which is all of this. Heard one of those being rejected, um. But it's the process for navigating it. It does provide a really consistent. Approach where you go particularly, and then it also makes sure that everything is aligned with all union contracts that are there, but that's. In effect, what we're.
So, so does the, does the job offer letter come from the department head or does it come from Libby?
Comes from human services.
So, so that the head of HR or some officer, a HR officer actually produces the offer letter and. On behalf of the hiring manager or whatever.
And then you sign it and return it to engagement. This is my conflict comes from, it's. Town managers appointing. A regulatory, regulatory board member.
You mean employee or member?
We're talking about committees.
Like Concom.
Yeah.
But.
Could be some political. Radification, radification. And. I think that's. That's probably more. Question. That we talk about that.
I mean, I, I hope we're talking about employee, employment situations as opposed to appointment.
Well, but that's what triggered me too. I think it's what triggered him because it says boards and commissions and. He's saying we'll get to that more in the legislative section, but. Pretty sure you're going to have a town council appointing those people.
Yeah, I, I think the current policy is, you know, Jeff. The employees, the actual employees.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you're, if you're. As Andy was saying. The centralization of appointments to committees. Being in one place. Could be sort of dangerous.
I agree, I'd. But he, he was saying that we'll talk about it in the legislative section. So I think there was some confusion about that. Our town manager doesn't. Really appoint that many people. Who, for the boards that we have. And the commissions. That's a huge part of the job of the select board as it is. So. When you have that written in there, I guess that's what's confusing me, but I, I guess I need to look at it compared to what it says now. Cause maybe it says that now, but it's just ignored.
Um, yeah, Jeff was. I think what. This is saying, this is how I understand it. So hopefully I get this right is.
Commissions by her, by him or her.
Is currently in our system, the select board points. All non-elected. Committees and commissions in their role in the executive branch. And there's no. There's no check to that. You're appointed by the select board, you're appointed. That's it. You're done. What this is doing is saying. The town manager is the executive, is going to make all of those appointments. And if the council feels that they're inappropriate. They can veto those appointments. So I think what this is attempting to do is provide. A chat on appointments to try to avoid those situations. So if they feel there's something that's. Not correct or someone wasn't properly selected. That there's a mechanism. To stop that now where in our current system. Unless I did something in the charter. There is not.
And that, that applies to both of. Employment appointments or hires as well as committees and commissions. Correct. So, so the, the authority goes to the town manager as opposed to the select board, because we have it today. And. The town council that has this 15 or 30 day veto.
Right. So I think if the council felt that the. The candidates selected for the agricultural commission weren't the best choices for a lot of different reasons. They would submit their letter of disapproval. And either restart that funding process or take up whatever. Other mechanism is there by. This jar, by the post jar. Joe.
I mean, it kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier, Mel. We don't. Know what all those boards and committees and commissions are going to be. And I don't. We actually don't have a history of the town manager doing that for the, I would say, boards and commissions and committees and. Think we're all kind of thinking that we want to keep some things. As, uh, seamless as possible or the continuity. That we have. I mean, if you, if you. Think a town manager should appoint all those people, speak up.
I, I think, well, I do, I mean, I think that's, I think that's one of the big changes that would occur if you go to town man, the town management. Town council forum is that some of these authorities do shift to the town manager. And we already have, Libby's already a pretty strong town manager. This, this, you, this town manager ends up being a little stronger because a lot of this effort goes through. That position as opposed to a, a select board having an authority in our current open company.
Well, um, if you look at the way committee appointments are made, you know, there's two, two tiers or two sequences. And. The people apply. And then, uh, Erica makes a list and they read it out and then the select board. All scratches down their votes and they give them to Erica and it comes back. It's a. Very interesting process and, and. Could be to some extent political. So I'm, I'm ready to go with where we're going on this direction.
Sorry. Yeah, just for, just for the record, I just looked it up. The town manager appoints five committees currently, the non-voting taxpayers, commission on disability. Parks and Rec Commission, Traffic Safety Work Group and the Visitor Service Advisory Committee.
Is that through by law or is that through just delegation?
I'm assuming it was through one with the incremental, um, charter changes. If not, she is the, the select board delegated the authority. I'm not sure which.
Well, in the current charter, they delegate. So you guys delegate. The, the appointment that you see fit. And since those are advisory boards for the most part, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So there's a difference. It's like, hey, you're getting buys. And you, on regulatory board though, you're, you're kind of on the wrong side of the fence.
But those are state laws. So does the state say that it has to be? An elected body that appoints like Concom or do they say you can do whatever you want?
You can do whatever you want in this charter.
No, no, it's, if a state law says you have to have a Concom and they have to be appointed, do they tell you how to appoint your Concom? For example, because that's what, one of the regulatory bodies that we do have.
Well, I think sort of the best example for what you're talking is that there really, there are, um, a couple of different types of, of, um. Multi-member boards. There are ones created under state law. Think of your planning board. Uh, there are. Ones that the city, the town can option, optionally adopt that are under state law. And then there are ones that are created str- strictly by the community. Um, and for those, you can decide who the appointing authority is amongst yourselves. And for example, the planning board, if you move to a different form of government. Um, it specifically vests the mayor with the authority to make appointments to the, to the planning board. Um. In the interest of progress, I, I, I would propose to the committee. We can, um. Excise the language about members of boards and committees from this section and we could put it, we could park it. And you know, there really are two different bodies, right? So you can consider what, whether you want the town council to do the appointments. Or the town manager or some combination of the two, but we can, for the purpose of this discussion, we can park it and move on to other sections as you sort of. Uh, learn more and, and decide what you want to do with that particular authority, if that might help you sort of, sort of move forward.
Works for me.
Yeah, why, why don't we try to keep moving along on this so that we, I, I'd rather, you know, move. Move through this document and try to. You know, tick off as many things that we sort of agree on, or at least are, don't find that controversial. And then if there's issues like this. That we really need to chew on, we can sort of come back to them.
So Mel, just.
That's fine. I, I think that there are a number of things that you really can't. Do executive out legislative or vice versa. So, you know, I think Anthony's suggestion is just to set it aside. Until we get to legislative and then we re- revisit it and, and deal with it. Um, so that's fine. So, um.
For you, just for you, I just wanted to, so everybody's on the same page. So. For now, we're going to excise this portion of this section and we're going to sort of hold that in the parking lot. Uh, but the, the language would be all department heads and employees. Minus that, that language for now.
Well, we're doing employees of the department head language, uh, from the, from the current Nantucket charter. So we, I, I, I made a note of that too. But, um, okay. All right. Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right. And under C is a very general, uh, but important, uh. Duty of the town manager, which is to supervise and direct the administration of all departments, agencies and office. Unless otherwise provided for this charter, very broad language. It's really the essence of the town manager to supervise and direct the administration. You have similar language to that. But I will point out where we'll probably have to park this too, is that, um. Under your current, um, uh, charter for eight and four nine. It, it, it very clearly states which departments and boards are part of the administration and which are independent. So you'll need, will need to do that at some point in the future, but not, not tonight. So I, I think that the. The language in C is very generic. Uh, and if there is a need to limit it for certain, the scope of it. For certain departments, we can do that at future time. Number D is, is a section, um. Uh, that you do not have in your, um, in, in your current charter. Um, and, uh, it's one that we're finding that, um. Uh, it's, it's a really important function of towns. It's evolved. It's very function, uh, important function. And so there's a requirement that every five years. The town manager shall prepare, update. A, uh, a town wide strategic plan. Now, this isn't a, a financial plan necessarily. It could include finances, but it's more of a, uh, strategic plan in terms of the direction of the, of the town. So we've been putting that in charters. You don't have, uh, that currently. I don't know if you have, uh, an ongoing strategic planning process. So, um, we should decide, uh, whether that's appropriate, uh, provision for an anti.
Mel, this is Tom Dixon again. So it's like, remember we do, um. Since I've been on the board a little over a year now, we've met. I don't know, three or four times on the strategic plan. And it is up on the website. We also have, um, a year, a yearly audit. And several other, we're just, um, updated. I know town admin is updating the comp, compensation and classification study right now. So that's also another part, but the, the charter is, I'm excuse me, the strategic plan is, um. The select word strategic planet, it's five areas.
It's about a cycle or you just sort of.
That was 10 years.
No, it's, we, we, we've revisited it yearly.
So it doesn't have like a, put it on a shelf for four years and then redo it.
So this says, uh, it says, um.
At least.
At least. So, uh, you can do it more frequently.
It's been on a. A three-year cycle in a sense where there's the five existing focus areas. And there was four until the start of this latest cycle where the fifth one was added. But the goals inside those strategic plans are updated annually. And things that are. Crossed off the list essentially. With that thing on the list within there. But it, it's worked really well as far as.
Yeah, that, that's a good, that's a good amendment to what I was saying. It said it's neat. Yeah.
Mel, I, I say we're in violent agreement, so, uh. I could put it in the term to make sure that we, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Um, and then, so then we moved to E, which is another provision that does not exist in the Nantucket charter. And it gives the town manager the authority to fix the compensation of all employees. Essentially through a, a personnel management plan, which you'll see later on in the, in the, uh, list of, uh, items. But, um, I don't know how you do it now. Typically, um, you know, there's a compensation plan that's adopted, uh. Uh, I, I assume by the select board meeting. I don't know how, how it works now.
Mel, how, how does this affect union employees? We have, you know, Nantucket, that's a pretty good range of union employees in various, uh, areas.
Yeah, well, union, uh, agreements are, uh, are collective, collectively bargained and you can't just fix compensation without. Having bargained those with union members. I assume that would be part of the personnel management plan, which would I, you know, would make that clear.
Okay. So, okay. So you, you, you collective bargaining agreements, um, and various union issues fall under the personnel management plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and state law as well. Yep.
Okay.
F is a very standard one, uh, says the town manager should, must attend all the meetings of the town council. You have a similar provision for, uh, town manager attending select board meetings. You know, the town manager has a voice, but no vote. So, uh, I think that's pretty straightforward. A ref.
Okay.
Uh, number G, um, you don't have it in your charter, but it's a very standard and typical, uh, language in, in charters. Basically just, um, making sure that the town manager keeps full and complete records and, uh, reports to the town council on a, on a regular basis. Not less than a year, a full report of the operations. Um, you know, that could be done during the budget process or it could be done a lot of times, but basically just says, uh, it, it, this is, uh, one of those that really um, solidifies the fact that the town manager works for the council. And, um, you know, has responsibilities, both F and G were really related specific, and H uh, actually are all how the town manager, um, works with the town council to make sure that, uh, they, they can handle their, uh, policy and legislative, um, duties. So, uh, this particular one is just r- r- records, keeping good records and reporting to the town council. Uh, let me go to the next one. It's H. Um, it's, uh, just that the town, that, that, the, the manager keeps the town council advised the needs of the town and recommends, uh, adoptions, whether they be bylaws or budgets or policies or what have you. And you do have that actually, uh, section, uh, this language in your, in your charter. So, uh, I think really F, G and H are, are a, a group of, uh, sections that deal with, uh, the manager's responsibility to, to the council.
Okay.
Um, now we're moving to J, which, um, deals with property of the town, uh, both real and personal property. Um, it requires the town manager to keep a full and complete inventory. You have, uh, related language in, um, in your, in your charter. Um, I don't know if you wanted to say, say again?
You skipped, you skipped I probably inadvertently.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm in J. Oh, I, I am sorry, Anthony. Thank you. I and J are both property-related issues. Um, one, uh, I has to do with the rental and use. Um, and, and maintenance and repair of, of those facilities. And, um, J is the, is the inventory. And you do have language in, uh, both, for both of those that is incorporated in four point two D, number six. We look at that to see if there's anything unique in that language that we should see, um.
Question.
Curtis.
Is, is there any place we're going to get to construction of town facilities? I don't know how we're going to get there, but I mean, you know, we're going to be building or buying stuff and, um, where is that covered in this or some other, some other place?
Uh, well, uh, building and, building and buying some stuff is here, but, uh, are you talking about like a school building or?
No, I'm talking about a new DPW garage.
Yeah. Um. Well, I, I believe that that's part of the capital, um, budgeting requirements and obligations of the town manager to identify those. And then to put it before, and what the process is, we will deal with that later on.
Okay. Well, I definitely a town manager should be implemented. Jeff?
I think letter L will cover your question.
Okay. I, uh, just, well, inventory. Well, okay.
Yeah.
You hear when I'm coming, uh, getting rid of this trailer, for example.
It's gonna be on the end of the board. It's air, it's air conditioned.
Yeah.
All right, Mel.
All right. Um.
We're on K.
Yes. You're on K. Um, K, um, is a, um, is an ability for the town manager to delegate their, their, uh, some of their authorization. Um, you don't have that in your current charter, but, um, that is a very typical of, of charters. Um, and I don't know to the extent that the town manager here, um, delegates or, uh, subordinates something to, to a department. So, it's, it's, it's just a general. There's no specific examples, but, um, uh, uh, is maybe, uh, Pat or Anthony, is there anything in particular that we should, uh, identify here? It is used in most charters.
Um, I, I don't know if Pat is anything. Mel, I don't know if, if, sometimes in my mind, I think of that, that, that question of hiring has come before, and I always think of this section in terms of that, like, you know, the, the, um, the department heads have the power to sort of go through that whole hiring process. And in some ways, it's an extension of the manager authority, but that may not be what you're thinking. So I don't.
No, I, well, I think the hiring is specifically mentioned. So let's talk about purchasing. So in, you, I don't think we've gotten there yet, but um, the town manager w- will be responsible for purchasing goods and services of the town. And, uh, it's very possible that the town manager will delegate, uh, purchasing of whatever, you know, something less than $25,000. Department heads can, can do that on their own as long as they, you know, follow the, uh, procurement, uh, requirements of mass law and all that. So that's one, purchasing. Um, just, you know, I just can't think of it too much off the top of my head, but this does give the town manager that authority to delegate to, uh, an officer, another officer of the town department head primarily, uh, to, to, uh, to do some, some of the, um, requirements that are in this section.
Yeah.
I mean, I would add, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I would add, um, it's also common for a town manager to delegate some HR functions. Um, you know, negotiations, investigations, um, pulling together policies. Um, that's another area where the town manager may designate a subordinate officer.
Question.
Curtis.
Uh, I'm looking at K and the exception of discharge of, of employees. In other words, the town manager can't delegate discharge. So that means the town manager is the only one who can authorize discharge of an employee.
Yes.
See, it's hidden there in K.
That's a good point, Curtis.
Was, was discharge of employees under the, the, uh, uh, what do you call it? The delegating to, uh, department heads or is they only have the power to hire? So that was at the part that we were.
Who discharges?
Uh, under your current charter, under your current charter, um, the department heads have the ability to discharge. I, I can't remember if it's with the approval or, or the, or it's that the m- manager has to proactively say not to, but it's.
I, I have the language, Anthony. It says, with authorization of the town manager, the department heads may remove, suspend or otherwise discipline such personnel subject to grievance procedures, union, and, uh, union contracts and so on. So, so it basically allows department heads, but it has to have a specific authorization, the town manager, which, you know, is, is incorporated in K. Um, so I, I, I think we're good with K.
Okay.
Just checking.
Let's keep moving.
L is a very important, um, executive function, uh, to execute contracts. Um, unless otherwise prescribed by bylaw. Um, anything that has an appropriation, which are many things, but not necessarily. You could have, for example, something already appropriated in the budget. Uh, you know, whatever, a piece of equipment in a, uh, department and, uh, the town manager can sign that contract, but if it requires an appropriation, um, you know, a additional appropriation or appropriation to make this happen, uh, that would obviously require the town council since, um, they have that, uh, like, that power of appropriation of the legislative body.
Makes sense.
All right. Um.
Another question?
One last question. Right now, the select board agenda has contracts, uh, and there are um, dollar values to those contracts. And then there's a line that says source of that funding. Sometimes it goes back to, um, ATM from 2010 that's carried forward. Is that covered in this that all the, the source of the funding may be from a whole variety of other things? Tom, is that common as far as you know?
I'd, yeah, it ha- it happens.
But, but every contract that is voted by the board has a source of funding showing.
For sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And that's.
On, on the physical contract too, that funding sources, again, identified on.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's covered in K.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Um.
Letter M.
Letter M deals with the, the responsibility to negotiate contracts with town employees. Now this, these are the unions, uh, who organize in this fashion and, um, uh, uh, but you know, any, any appropriations, which, you know, literally are any, anytime you, uh, have a collective bargaining agreement, uh, they require appropriation. So, um, it's subject to, uh, the, uh, vote of the town council. Uh, but it's the responsibility of the manager to negotiate. As Pat earlier said, that, that may be one of those where they, uh, delegate. They also have in this section the ability to hire a special counsel to help in the, in, in the negotiations. Right now, I want to be clear, it's the select board who, um, who approves, um, uh, you know, is responsible for, for those, uh, contracts, um.
And you, I, I'm not sure. I, I'm just looking at, um, four point two D nine, which talks about that the, under our current charter, if the town manager has the has the authority to, um, approve or disapprove any employment contracts, but not union contracts. So that's sort of being carved out in our current government?
Correct. Um, but you know, as I said, uh, all union contracts really do require appropriation. So, uh, the, the difference here is that the town manager can actually sign a, a contract or negotiate and sign a contract with a union. It, it, but it's subject to appropriation. So technically it is subject to council. In your current contract, the, the town manager could not sign that contract. They could negotiate it, but it would have to be approved and signed and, uh, it, by the select board.
Absolutely.
Also subject to appropriation of town meeting.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Um, N is the, the purchasing of supplies, materials, service and equipment. Um, that's a very standard one. And that's, you know, one of the benefits of having, um, uh, centralized administration. Currently, I don't see that in your charter. But, uh, it's a very standard one. Um, O is, um, just making sure that, that the, the general laws in the charter and votes of the town council um, are, are carried out and, um, and, and, and if there need to be enforced, they, they, they would be enforced by the town manager. You do have similar language in your current charter, uh, for that. Um, P is that, uh, personnel, um, uh, management plan that was referred to previously. Really what P is, is, um, it, it really requires the town manager to create a personnel, how are you making personnel decisions? How were they making? How were the department heads making? You know, you talk about job descriptions and how benefits and, and all, all sorts of things like that are. This is very important, um, because it provides, uh, something in writing for the town manager. It gives, I think, the community the, the confidence that, uh, with this, all this authority that the town manager has, there is actually a plan that they must work from, and that's what, uh, P does. Um, you have to submit it to the town council. Um, and they can, they can veto it, but, um, this is a very important plan. Um, I think especially when you're delegating so much authority to one individual. You don't, you don't currently have such a requirement in your charter that I could see.
I like this one. Well, I, I, I actually think this will be a bit of the Libby because her, one of her thought comments to me was, you know, um, if this were to come to pass, what other expenses or sort of changes to her job, uh, might, might occur due to change going to town council and no, I don't, I don't know if she does a personnel management plan today, but, um, it certainly would be something new.
I mean, clearly the town, I'm quite sure follows all of these, uh, you know, has very, um, robust, uh, requirements for recruitment and, and appointment and uh, to the fact, to the extent that some of your employees are civil service, you know, how that works. So I, I think it's really just a question of putting it together in a plan. Um, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, now we're at, um, Q, which is, um, just gives the town manager the, the authority to, um, inquire into the conduct of employee, um, under the town manager's control. And again, you know, we'll have to talk later about what, what scope is within the town manager's control here, but pretty standard language and you do have that in your current charter. Uh, R is pretty catchall. Um, you know, whatever else, uh, functions that, um, the town council should, should, uh, create, should be, should, can be done. Should be done by, uh, by law stipulated in the employment agreement, but, um, you have similar language there. And then, um, this S has to do specifically with the, uh, boards and committees. And maybe this, as I'm thinking now, should be put back up into that section about boards and committees. This is a s- sort of similar to a, um, the personnel management plan. It just, you know, requires it to be out there. How are you going to advertise? Um, and, um,
It's job postings. You're just job postings.
Essentially, it, yeah, you must, you must advertise them publicly. Yep. Don't have that in your current charter, but I think it's pretty good, good language. And then, and then the final number T is, um, this is often a separate section and, um, but it basically, um, requires the approval of town council, but it allows the town manager, uh, and de- designates the town manager to initiate any reorganization, uh, dissolution of departments, boards, committees. It's basically that the organization chart of the town. And it allows the, um, the town manager to change that, but it has to ha- get approval, um, of the town council.
Okay.
So that are, that is the, the meat of that article. Uh, I think we've gotten good direction from you and we can handle that. Now we can go to the, to the other sections. They're, they're pretty straightforward, honestly. Um, they're really a process that, um, provides the, uh, what happens in the, in the, in the event of an absence or vacancy in the office of the town manager. There's a temporary absence, which allows the town manager to designate in advance some department head who will take over in a temporary absence. And then, um, and then there's the actual more of permanent vacancy, which, uh, obligates the, uh, the town council to fill that as soon as possible. Can you scroll up a little bit, Anthony, or scroll down? Um, up that way? Yeah. Yeah. Um, the, the town council can, uh, appoint a temporary, an acting town manager, but in this particular section and B, uh, it cannot exceed four months, although they can extend it with renewals, not to, not to exceed an additional four months. So sometimes it does take a while, but this point is, is that, uh, we don't want the town manager vacancy to be left hanging out there or having an acting manager. Uh, it obligates the, the town council to move with quicker, uh, urgency. So that's the vacancy provisions. Section three point four talks about suspension or removal of town manager. Now, all town managers typically will negotiate something in their, in their employment agreement about this. But this right up front gives the, the, the major, um, you know, authority of the, of the town council to suspend or remove the town manager, but does provide some guidelines around that, um, which I think is prudent. Um, and basically, uh, there's a process. Um, sometimes, uh, you know, the town manager could, uh, negotiate more than that in, uh, in their employment agreement, but this is the basic, uh, suspension or removal provision. You don't have that in your current, in your current, um, uh, charter. I'm quite sure that Libby has it in her employment agreement. But, uh, we recommend that these be in the charter as well.
And Mel, I, I, as, as I think I'm ju- I think I'm ju- And Mel, I as as I think I'm just, I think I'm just repeating what you said, so the the employment agreement probably is the controlling uh item here, if you if you have a severance arrangement or a you know, termination for no cause sort of language that gets you a financial settlement, that would have been built into the employment agreement at the beginning.
Yes, but to be clear, the employment agreement cannot violate this provision, it can't, uh it can be greater, you know, it can be more, but it can't be any less than this. Well, if the town council wants to suspend or to remove the town manager, they have to at least do these things.
Got you.
I think I'm wrong, but his current contract is super majority, removal by super majority, and this is by a simple majority. If I like this.
I don't know. You know, you know, I have no, I have no idea what are what are the regulations. All righty, um Mel, Pat, Anthony, anything, any other over overarching issues? Um, and I think we, you know, we went through a lot today, um you know, I I, again, I thought as as boilerplate and and kind of um laying out the powers and responsibilities of the town manager, I thought it all seemed you know, pretty good, and I didn't see too many situations situations where there was a conflict or um you 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 add in a few uh sections that don't exist in Nantucket's existing town charter or description, but they all seem reasonable to me, so anybody, any other?
I I'm comfortable and um um what's the next step, what is our next?
So next, next time, uh Anthony, we would what, we would kind of vote, you you're gonna sort of clean this up, and then we would vote on it and sort of say, okay, the 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 executive department, um executive branch, you know, we're sort of happy with where we're where that particular language stands.
But this is still in draft.
Yeah, but
Okay.
But I think I assume that we want to tick off things and sort of put them on the done pile if we can.
Yeah, correct, so so right now, what I've got for changes are update for residency that that it should be within six months, that you want to add a term, a three year term um for the um uh town manager, um you want to remove, and it it's gonna cross several sections, um remove the um uh the appointment authority for the the various boards and committees and other multi-member boards. And when I say remove it, I mean really move it over to the parking lot, because you may come back to it, or you may leave it in some other um, some other body, and so those would be the changes uh we could make, and then perhaps at your next meeting uh you know, you could say that this is fine, and we want to move on, and I guess I'd be also be curious if you want to move on to uh the next topic on the work plan for our next meeting, or if you want to spend a little more time chewing on um this executive uh function section, you've still got a half an hour left today, so.
I'd like to move on and have this available for review, but let's go to the next section.
I agree with Curtis, and I think we're gonna spend a lot of time on collected versus appointed. I think so, which is a good idea to part of.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Is, um, would it be a good idea to have like a summary of the major differences between the original charter and what we're recommending? The few that there are?
Well, why don't, why don't, if if I understood Anthony's, what your tasks are, is you're gonna kind of clean this up and fix the language in those three or four sections. If you could, you know, just have a few of your comments about here are the three or four, I don't maybe, I don't know how many, three or four or five major differences with the current charter, that would be helpful, I think, and certainly would respond to Donna's question.
I, yeah, we can definitely do that, we we tried to do that with the sort of the red text, um and you have, so we can expand on that with a little bit more commentary.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I I think we we sounds like we're in agreement, so next time we we could spend some time on kind of reviewing where this is in terms of its semi-final form, and then move on to legislative discussion.
Okay.
All right, is that okay with everybody?
Amen.
Okay. Um, there are a couple of members of the public, one one here in the meeting, and uh Kathy, it looks like, I don't know if anybody else is there, are there any questions from the public?
Um, yeah, Lucy, I just, because I've been on the list for a couple of um weeks, hope I was missed. So like the town council, that is like, the the select board will be adding, just for breaking down for somebody to make a school down to explain, so town council, you're adding on to select board essentially, like so instead of like before you'd have nine, and then town manager. Right, so you have it.
Right.
And then you just won't have an open town meeting.
Right, well, there there will be a town council that in effect have the powers of town meeting.
Right.
It will, and it will be larger, presumably larger than the five member.
Right, nine it said somewhere, right?
Well, I don't.
There's no number, yes.
Right, 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 so it's, yes, but that's basically.
That's kind of the idea, yeah.
You have like town manager, select board, yeah.
Well, town manager, town.
Town council, but it's like.
Our town council, town manager.
Right. All right. Are there any other? Uh. Uh, also?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other subjects that have come before the meeting this afternoon? And Matt, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Uh, hi. Curtis?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Bo? Kelly?
Hi.
Joe, hi. Um, thank you, Anthony, Pat and Mel, I thought that was um you know, a good start in terms of getting into the weeds a little bit, and we look forward to continuing to make progress next time.
Next meeting is?
Next meeting is two weeks.